Open the meeting officially. All right, the audience participants and general public should be aware that any or all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. While some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WIPS or other outfits. Persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WIPS or the Board of Selectmen's Office. A small fee will be charged. All right. So the first thing we have on the agenda is 10:15 Hingham Street. So who would like to start?
Question first. Christine, did you get a site plan review application as well as a design review application? The only thing that sent us was design review.
Well, we had the hard copies. You got the hard copy?
I've got the hard copy of the design review, but I don't have a site plan review.
That's what we got.
Just the design review because there's a fee for both of them.
And what about the one that was emailed?
I'm just going by what you gave me. Now, if it was email, I just took what you gave me this morning.
In the back of the path that the site plan review application drive at the very back.
My mistake. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Does that mean I can leave?
All right. So are we good on that?
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to start?
I guess I'll start. I'm Don Bracken from Bracken Engineering, the engineer for the project. We did all the design work and survey work on the site. With with me tonight is Bob Micho from MDM Transportation Consultants. He prepared the traffic memorandum that was part of the application package. This was, if you recall, Mr. Corbett, Jim Rader, the applicant, hopefully will be on in a few minutes. He has another meeting going on. We met with you and Mr. Lucas right before the pandemic, I think, to go over some preliminary ideas on what we were thinking for the site. And since that meeting, you know, we completed the site plans. And as discussed in a meeting with you, we needed some variances from the zoning board of appeals, which we applied for those variances and we granted those variances. And now we're back here for a site plan review and design review. If I may, can I put the plan up on the screen to go over it?
Yeah.
Someone's going to have to allow me to share a screen.
You should be able to now.
Okay. Okay, this first screen is shows the existing conditions of the site. The site has 315 feet of frontage on Hingham Street. Hingham Street in this location is not a state highway. It is a county layout maintained by the town. The site currently is wooded. At one time, there were three, single-family dwellings in three separate lots at this location. The site, most of the site is generally level with the road grade. There's a small depression on the west side of the site, which has been identified as a wetland area. So there's a small drop off in grades in that area. And then to the southeast section of the site, there's another wetland area that was identified where the grades drop off five or six feet in that area. You can see on these plans, we've added in the buffer zones from the conservation regulations, the 100-foot and the 25-foot buffer zones. 25 is pretty much a no-touch. Anything within the 100 requires their jurisdiction. These areas that are highlighted in blue are where we estimate the 100-year flood zone to be. If you look at the maps published by FEMA, it actually shows the flood zone going through the property in this location. Like a lot of other properties on the same flood map, because it's so old and inaccurate, we're going to apply to FEMA to get the flood zones corrected and shown accurately as was done around our site. We can't file for a building permit until we go through FEMA on that. And I'd like to pull up one of the site plans. This is this is a landscaping layout and zoning plan. As you can see, the lot itself is about 37,000 square feet in total. It's in the industrial hotel H1 district. It's also in the watershed protection district.
Excuse me, I believe that's the same map.
Yeah, it never switched.
Oh, it never switched. It only switched on mine. Sorry. Let me see if I can get this. Hold on one sec. Sorry about that. I may have too many things open on my computer right now. Can you see the lighting plan?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Sorry about this. You see the architectural plans up?
Not yet.
I don't know why I can't.
Don, you might try hitting the share, get out of the share screen and then re-enter it. There you go. You can see your email.
Yeah, we can see everything now.
Oh, okay.
All right, how's that? Can you see the cover sheet?
Your email.
Still emailing it.
I don't know.
Hey, Don, your archive mailbox is almost full. You may want to, you may want to look at that.
There we go.
Yeah. Yeah, just go back.
That's not what I wanted, but let me go back. How's that? No?
There's still drainage.
It's the construction detail sheet that's showing.
Yeah, I don't.
Don, are you running this as multiple screens? That's often the problem.
Yeah, I have multiple screens, so.
Why don't you try toggling out of that with your F5 key and that might tighten it up for you.
Hey, Bob, do you have a site plan handy that you could?
No, but I'll offer a suggestion, and that is in the upper-left corner, behind, below the word home on the left side, there's a multiple-page tab there that you can click on while you're in the PDF format. You should be able to scroll to individual sheets using that. I've got a very high level. It's our figure two, Don, if you want me to bring, try to bring it up.
Yeah, if you could try that.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen. All right.
Well, Bob, do you want to, you want Bob to go into, can we skip and go to Bob for traffic? In the meantime, I'll get the plans up, but do you mind switching around?
Yeah, we can switch.
Okay. Do you mind taking over, Bob?
Sure.
All right. I'm going to grab somebody to help me.
All right, so someone will have to enable my sharing capability here.
I just did that, but Don still got to abandon his sharing first.
Okay.
I have a whole different screen than I'm used to. I'm just going to get out and come back in.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so let me share screen. So for the record, my name is Robert Micho. I'm a principal with MDM Transportation Consultants. We've, we've done several projects along this particular quarter, most recently the Wendy's project at the Home Depot Plaza. And prior to that, the Volvo dealership as well, right across the street from this particular site. So you'll see in this locust map that we've actually got traffic data for a number of locations along this quarter, including the signal at Commerce Road, the driveways at the Volvo dealership, and even some of the other properties closer to the Route 3 ramp systems. So we're pleased to say that we were able to use data that existed pre-COVID that we believe fairly represents the traffic conditions along this section of road. Most recently updated in 2017 as part of the Wendy's filing. And we did have a chance to go out and actually look at travel conditions. We have made some corrections to that data to reflect the additional trips that will be generated by the Wendy's facility as well as some of the other area land uses, including the Volvo dealership, for instance, to properly reflect what we call a design condition volume along the stretch of road. The site plan that Don is going to be pulling up is very schematically shown in this diagram to include just over 5,000-square-foot building with access to Hingham Street. That's a full-access driveway. But most significantly, to the rear of that building, provides a driveway connection to the adjoining property that has direct access to the signal at Hingham Street. So we believe on that basis that anyone who wants to exit this property, particularly left turns, would have an easier time of it by accessing the signal through that rear driveway. The traffic volume conditions, which is shown here, are all documented in our submitted study. Hingham Street is a well-traveled street. There's no surprise there, between 1,000 and 1,500 directional trips during peak hours. As it relates to the property itself, we, we've actually looked at two different land use scenarios for the development. One assumes, I'm sorry, one assumes a general retail category. The other includes a specific land use of bank as an assumption along with retail. What this allows us to do is to bracket the low side and the potential high-side traffic generation that this site might have associated with it. And as a conservative measure, we've assumed the higher trip generation standard under the category of bank and retail. I'll stress that no specific tenant has been identified for this property, but among the various land use categories that could be applied here, these are among the higher generating categories. So represents a somewhat conservative analysis. What that shows is that for the so-called bank and retail scenario, that we're talking about a peak directional traffic generation during peak hours of about 20 vehicles either coming into the property or leaving the property per hour, right? It's a fairly modest volume. It's not a large building. And when we look at how those trips are distributed in this diagram, you'll see that the vast majority of turns that would be exiting the property during peak hours would actually be going through the signal. It's simply the easiest way to leave the site to travel west. But certainly because it has full access on Hingham Street, anyone who's going here would find it very easy to make a right turn into here directly from Hingham Street or a right turn exit to return toward the Route 3 area. Or even likewise, making a left turn into the property as there are at least two lanes in the westbound direction, one of which could be used for making the left turn movement in. Very modest volumes. We're talking about 10 left turns an hour, about one left turn every five minutes or so. How this relates to impact is we looked at capacities. There's really no constraints here. The signal itself works quite well. I'm not suggesting that it doesn't queue, because it does. We've observed that. We've reported that in prior filings for other projects. But from a capacity standpoint, it has more than adequate capacity to accommodate the needs of this particular project during the highest, busiest peak hours of the day. And so this is not a capacity impact project. There is ample capacity. It's got a limited impact because of the size and nature of the use. And I'll turn over to more detailed version of the site plan that would show some of the traffic controls that are being contemplated for the driveways, signs and markings, all MUTCD compliant, essentially just stop signs with stop lines and delineating travel aisle lines. We've also conducted a vehicle turn analysis, which I'll show you here to demonstrate that based on full access design in Hingham Street and rear access, that we have sufficient area to allow maneuvering of the largest responding vehicle in Rockland, which is the Rockland Ladder 1. You'll see the swept path is easily accommodated within the confines of the driveway at Hingham Street into the property. And as we look at the travel within the property, again, all of the aisles and dimensions of the aisles and spaces allow for that larger vehicle to entirely traverse the site back out to the adjoining property, which has access to the traffic signal. We conducted a single-unit delivery-type-vehicle analysis as well that demonstrates that deliveries using a, what we call a box truck, can easily access and circulate within the site as well as demonstrated by these particular swept paths exhibits. So the conclusion here is we're talking about a low-impact project, ample capacity, driveway access that will be designed to an industry standard with sufficient sightlines and traffic controls in accordance with good industry practices with excellent access to the, to the signal. So pretty straightforward. But we're glad to answer any specific comments that the board might have. With that, I'll perhaps turn back, Don, and let's see, is he back? So, Don, I think that's the high-level discussion. Are you set to share your screen again?
I am. I can continue.
Excellent. All right. So I'm going to unshare mine. Okay, here we go. It should be all yours.
I have to be enabled to share. Host disabled.
Oh, okay. Hang on a second. Sorry about that.
No problem.
There you go. There you are. All right, sir.
All right, here we go. Okay. So again, here's the site plan. Obviously, Bob took you through the maneuvering through the site and the connections and the connection to the property to the south, which is another office building in control also by the applicant. In order to make this connection, we're proposing an easement across the lane for the for the parking area to get to the lights. We also may utilize that easement for utilities as well. We have 21 parking spaces. We did a parking summary table on the plan based on one space per 300 square feet of retail use plus one space per three, I'm sorry, I'll have to zoom in on that. Here we go. One space for two employees for, that adds up to four. So there are 23 spaces on the site, 21 are required with this proposed use. We did note that two of the spaces would be available for snow removal if needed in the future. We hired Ed Fuller, a professional landscape architect, to work with us to come up with this landscaping plan. Celery pear trees will be planted along the street frontage, some red maples in appropriate areas. Also, a lot of proposed vegetation is conducive to being within the wetland buffer zones to help mitigate any potential impacts within the buffer zones. The, we're trying to limit the amount of lawn area as much as possible to limit the amount of fertilization that would be required, again, to be sensitive to conservation issues. The drainage for the, for the site consists of an underground stormwater system in the parking lot for the roof runoff to be able to recharge and infiltrate clean runoff. Within the site, there'll be deep-some catch basins that will discharge into a stilling basin and then into what wet swale, which will be vegetated with wetland vegetation to help filter any of the runoff before it goes through another control structure, which will then overflow into the wetland to the west of the site. And there's a second overflow into the wetland to the southeast of the site. We have submitted plans and drainage calculations to the Conservation Commission, which have been reviewed by the Commission's engineering consultant, Henry Nova, already. He came back with some comments that we're confident we can address. Beta engineering was also hired by the Conservation Commission to review the notice of intent. They've come back with some comments as well. We do anticipate some minor planned changes to address their comments. Again, I don't know if Bob mentioned, but we do meet the requirement for one loading area in the back, and there'll be a dumpster pad in the back as well. And this is, again, the grading plan. The site will have to be raised three to four feet in order to fit the drainage in and meet all the stormwater management requirements.
Has this been sent to our Amri Engineering for Pat Brennan to review for the planning board?
No, we haven't sent it directly. I was assuming that the planning board would send it to them. So however you want to handle that, you know, obviously, I'm not sure what the protocol is for that.
I think it was sent to Pat.
We haven't received anything back from him on that?
I haven't heard from him myself, but.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything. But then again, a lot has been coming through.
Rob, did Pat Brennan review it for you on the ZBA?
We would have had him do that, but it was determined that they would originally, yeah, just go backwards. Rob Rose, the chairman of the Rockland Zoning Board. When they originally came to us, it was, it was basically, they were looking for a special permit and variances at the same time. It was determined that the special permit wasn't, it wasn't the right time for the special permit at this point because there was no, there was no designated, there was no designated renter at that point, basically, LSE. So we looked at it and said, look, and when you get your, you know, when you get somebody in there, because you didn't know if it was going to be the general business, you didn't know what was really going to go there. If it didn't, if it didn't work for the, you know, if it, if it wasn't a by right situation, then come to us for a special permit. So it turned into only variances. I think if it was going to be a special permit situation, we would have had, we would have had Pat look at it. But he didn't, it never got to that point, so we were only looking at it from a variance standpoint. So, long story short, which it wasn't, no, Pat Brennan did not look at this on our part.
Okay, thank you. All right. You want to continue, Don? Sorry about that.
Sure. Hopefully, I'm doing this right this time. I don't know. Do you see the architectural plans up?
No, you're still on landscape.
I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to stop the share. If you could let me, I'll go back to it again. Might be the easiest way to do it. I don't know why I'm just not seeing my.
You just had it, yeah?
You got it there?
Now you're back down the landscape. That's good.
All right, I'm going to leave my mouse on it. That's, some reason when I take my mouse off, it disappears. Okay, thank you for that. All right, so this is the proposed building design. It's one floor, 18 feet high, the majority of the building. It's 22 feet high, where you see the store signs are going to be placed. The facade, the bottom of the facade is a brick base with light gray aluminum composite panels along the top and then silver aluminum frame windows throughout the face of the building. And then the rear of the building will be textured concrete block, and you can see there's a mix on each side of of those, those, those treatments. We also included a lighting plan in this set. The entire site will be lit from the building itself, except for the entrance on the left-hand side. There'll be a light right about in this area. That's shown on the lighting plan that was submitted. And I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. John.
Have, have you modified the plan that you got up on the screen to what you're actually going to do as far as fire department access?
Yes, that's, this is the same plan that Bob showed you, where he demonstrated the fire truck access. This is the same layout. He, we gave him this layout, so.
So this is a different plan that was, that was originally submitted to the fire department.
Although we haven't gone to the fire department yet.
Because they've turned down this plan?
That I didn't know. I haven't, um. Hon- honestly, we thought, well, we thought when we submitted the application, number one, it would go to Amory, then it would go to all the other departments.
We submitted to the, all of departments on a Form K, uh, item, and the letter that came back from the fire department, and I'll read it verbatim. The Rockland Fire Department has reviewed the site plan for ten fifteen Hingham Street. The fire department has the following concerns. One, limited to no access to the rear of the building. The fire department cannot require the installation of a sprinkler system in a building under seventy-five hundred square feet, but it would greatly diminish the need for access to the rear of the building. Number two, CMR eighteen dot one dot one dot four, swept path analysis. Number three, CMR eighteen dot two dot three dot four dot eight, turning into the incoming lane of traffic. Fire department access needs to be adjusted to allow Rockland ladder one to have the ability to access the parking lot without crossing into the opposing lane of travel and running over curbs. That was, we received that on July fifteenth back from Deputy Chief Hamey.
Okay, um, you know, we'd be happy to sit down and meet with him and go over the plans with them. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if, if he saw the traffic report that included the swept path analysis on it, but we'd be happy to review that with him. Uh, we can make sure that it accommodates the Rockland ladder truck one that he's referring to, which I, I think Bob has done other projects in Rockland. Um, I'm, I'm sure he's using the right vehicle, but if not, we can adjust that. Um, and as far as access to the rear of the building, I'm sure that the applicant, um, you know, if, if we had to put a sprinkler system in to address that concern, I'm sure that they would do that.
All right, um, I'm sure, Chrissy, can you get the, this Form K to them?
Yep. I'll send all of them.
Okay.
Thank you, Chrissy.
You're welcome.
Because that's not the only Form K that was a concern either.
No, um, I could do the Form Ks if you want, Mike, or?
Yeah, if you want to continue.
All right, Police Department Form K had no problem. I'm assuming that you people have not seen any of these Form Ks?
No, we haven't.
All right, the water departments. Comments do need more informa- information. They have a letter. I can read it if you'd like. We can also forward it to you. Their board members, the Abbots and Rockland Joint Water Works, have severe concerns as to the construction of this proposal. As you're aware, the John F. Hannigan Water Treatment Plant and Reservoir Butts, this proposed development and the Board of Water Commissioners have serious concerns on the impact of our water supply. Uniqueness of the proposal leads credence to the additional concern that during construction, heavy equipment will be close to the wetlands. For com- I think he means too close to the wetlands for comfort.
Yeah, that's right.
And thus alleviate, alleviate the potential for a mishap that could, could contaminate our supply. One gallon of gasoline can contaminate one million gallons of water as well as being timely and costly to mitigate. We at the Joint Water Works cannot afford to be without the supply for any length of time. Therefore, at this time, the Abbots and Rockland Joint Water Works are requesting that the proponent perform in file with the Abbots and Rockland Joint Water Works. The necessary evaluations assure us that our supply will neither be impacted nor contaminated in any manner through this proposal. Such evaluation shall include but not be limited to construction accidents and long-term contamination of the aquifer. This being said, it should be stated, the policy of the Abbots and Rockland Joint Water Works pertaining to any development requiring a water supply for the municipality requires the following. Any plans submitted to and or approved by other boards does not constitute water availability. The process for water approval will require the proponent meet with the Abbots and Rockland Joint Water Works Commissioners to establish an acceptable plan of action to obtain approval for water availability. So you, you haven't met with water department or the sewer department?
No, no.
Because the sewer department's Form K is basically the same thing.
Okay.
Again, we can submit that to you, but it's basically, you have to meet with them before they'll agree to give you sewage.
Right, I, yeah. That's no problem. You know, as, as far as the, just, just so you know, the, you know, it went through a pretty stringent review for the drainage system itself and, um, you know, because it, it is a, within a, um, water supply area, it's, uh, it, it, it requires the maximum treatment that the Mass Stormwater Management Act requires.
I doubt it. I'm not an engineer. All I'm going by is the report. So that, um, I think it's, at least those three departments you should put on your list to, uh, yeah, have a conversation with and square it away.
Absolutely.
And I think, Mike, it should have to go to Pat Emery, too.
I think Pat should have a good look at it since it has in the ground filtration system and everything, being so close to the wetlands and everything, too.
Um, other than that, I, my only other question I have is parking. I don't know whether you've got enough parking in there. I know you, you figured sixteen, I think you said, for retail. But you have no idea what's going in there as far as retail?
No, there's no known tenant at this time, so we strictly went by what's in the bylaw.
But I figured out that you need seventeen spaces for retail and that leaves six for employees for, depending whatever number of stores you put in there. I know you got eight up there, but that doesn't mean that's how it'll be cut up.
Right, and so I, I mean, I would anticipate that, um, the, the site plan and a design review permit issued would be contingent upon, you know, the number of employees and, and what, what you're seeing. If, if anything changes when, uh, in the future, we would have to come back and get it modified.
Um, I see, it looks like now on this plan, you got up there now, you've got access coming out the back of the parking lot?
Correct.
The traffic was commented that they could use that. Are any of those spaces available to you?
Uh, no, we took a look at that and it actually, I don't know what the space requirements were at the time the building was built, but it actually doesn't have enough. Even though there is enough because of the parking lot is never full for that building, if you, if you go by the, uh, square footage requirements for office space, it doesn't have enough. So, uh, you know, we thought of that. We would have, uh, liked to be able to use those spaces for that property, but it would have made, it would have made the existing office non-conforming for parking.
Because I know when we first met, when you met with Mike, myself, a while ago, I forget just when, but you were talking about half of it being retail and half of it being professional offices.
Right.
And if you put professional offices in there, you're cutting or requiring more parking than just retail.
I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, Mr. Ray had probably decided to go all retail.
That's what I, that's what I kind of figured, but.
Yeah, yeah.
How many stores does he propose to put in there? Because I know he has a storefront, say, A, B, C, D.
I think, well.
Is it two or you're trying to get eight in there?
He anticipates two.
Because you only show two doors on, two doors.
Yeah, I mean, the way the architects drew the plan, I'm, I'm assuming he anticipates to have two there. But he, he still doesn't own the property, so all this is, we're still in due diligence so he can buy the property. So I think, I mean, chances are, once we get past this stage, if, uh, hopefully we do, that we would be back once we have a known tenant. And, you know, more, more accurate use laid out. Uh, as Mr. Rosa said, there are very few allowed retail uses in this district as it is, so, um, probably the majority of typical retail uses would require a special permit, so we'd be most likely filing for a special permit as well with the ZBA.
Right, uh, I have a question there, uh, you, going back to the site plan, along Hingham Street, along your entrance and everything, all granite curb, I believe there's granite curb out there now. But I don't know for a fact that, I wasn't paying attention.
We're, uh, geez, I, I can't remember off the top. I, we're calling for vertical concrete curb. But, you know, we could, we could do slope granite there if that's the preference, if that's typically what the town requires. We're not proposing granite. Typically, we don't usually do granite unless it's in a state highway and we're required to do granite.
Well, I know we usually require all gr- granite curbs at all the entrances because that's where people are going to cut the corner and wipe everything out.
Okay, I mean, we're, we, that's something that we could address on the plans.
Which, you know, we're plowing and everything else. On the long Hingham Street, I can't remember what is there. I know, I know there's something there, but I don't remember what's there.
I'll check that out and probably slope granite would be most appropriate, I think, for this case, so.
It's a combination. Looking at it on Google Earth right now, it's a combination. There's Betonless concrete, there's K-cord berm, and there's some vertical granite.
Uh, do you propose to have any, like, walkway or anything to the, um, electrical room? That you show on, um, your architectural drawing here? Do you have a door there? Is it?
In the back of the building?
Yeah. No, you have one at the sprinkler room because you have pocket on that side, but are you putting a walkway to the electrical room and to the door on, uh, east side of the building? That would be an emergency exit, I assume?
I have to pull up the floor plans, but I don't want to lose what I have. You're talking, there's a, I know there's a door in the back here and there's a door on the side. Well, we'll have to take a look at that if we need to. Obviously, we need something back there.
It just makes it easier to get access to one in the winter time when you have to shovel everything.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Especially the door on the east side for the tenant on the left there, you know what I mean? You have the door on the east side.
The plans that were sent to us in the elevation, the only door on the back of the building is out of the electrical room.
They show a door on the east side of the building to the left if you're looking at the front of the building.
One on each end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the architects added those on us after we finished the site plan, so.
That could very well be. I'm just looking at what was sent to us.
Well, we'll definitely address those. Either that or try to relocate the doors.
And what about, you have a loading zone in the back of, you said that's where the dumpster is going too, so how much room is there? And how are they gonna get whatever they're delivering and potentially delivering to the potential client if there's no access to the back of the building to have to bring it around to the front?
Well, the, um, the thought, thought on that, oh, I keep moving.
I know you don't have it.
Yeah, it would be, it would be, it would be box trucks that could use that sidewalk, you know what I mean? So it's, it sort of serves as double duty in the area for the, uh, uh, truck to pick up the dumpster. But if there were going to be deliveries, they could just back up to the dumpster and use that sidewalk to, to enter the building.
And the store on the left, did you just have to drag, bring it all the way around to the front of the?
Either that or they would, you know, park right in front in that lane temporarily to unload.
And would you say you were going to use a couple parking spaces for snow removal?
Yeah, that came up at the ZBA in, I mean, that's, uh, I hadn't, hadn't come across that before, but I think some of the ZBA mi- uh, members were concerned that all the snow should be stockpiled on the pavement, um, so it could be treated through the drainage system. Um, in our experience, as long as it doesn't go directly into the wetland, it's usually okay, at least with the Conservation Commission, so. Um, yeah, it's, so, you know, we felt that, um, you know, we, we could give up a couple of spaces for, for snow stockpiling if we needed to. And I think we showed it as the two spaces to the east of the building.
I think you had one at, one in the north.
I'm sorry, what, yeah, one.
Northwest corner and then the southeast corner, right?
Yeah, there it is there, so, yeah.
Because you have a fence along the northwest corner and the north of the, you know, protecting all that. I have another question, too. I don't know if it, how it would impact the traffic or anything else like that, but if you're, you're gonna apply for an easement so you can exit to the back of the property, onto the other property, to one O one, hang them there. Has, was there any thought about making that an exit only so people don't try to cut from the existing office building there, cut through the, the new retail space and exit so they avoid the light?
Uh, we, we didn't, we have, we didn't really consider it, but it is something that we could discuss and I'd probably, uh, defer it to, uh, Bob on that one, the traffic consultant. Get his thoughts on that.
Yeah, so let me just understand the, the, the request here. Um, which of these driveways would you suggest be one-way?
Uh, the, from ten fifteen into one O one.
I see.
If that was like one way, you're an exit only so people in the office park don't cut through that proposed new building.
I, I see what you're saying.
Or avoid the traffic light.
Yeah, I, I think the, the convenience of using the site is outweighed by the convenience that the signal offers. The signal works quite well. If one were to try to use this site as a cut-through, you know, it, it's not a straight shot, right? So you've got to get into the property, circulate in front of the building, uh, and, and still get to that driveway to make a right turn rather than going directly to the signal and making a right turn. That's just as efficient, if not more efficient, so.
Does that light signal at Commerce Road there every time? Only signaled when it, when people are leaving there because sometimes you're waiting there a while to get through that light.
Yeah, well, as a right, you're allowed to make a right on red there, uh, and the volume on that driveway is not extraordinarily heavy. So the, the likelihood that you would be delayed in making a right turn there, even if the light was red, is pretty, pretty small. The, the signal itself, uh, you know, if there are any delays, it would be on the driveway itself. I, I'll, I'll grant you that. But the delays that we're calculating based on how the signal is programmed is, uh, something less than, I think it's fifteen or twenty seconds of delay. So it's, it's, it's not likely to be more convenient to use the property as a so-called cut-through. You know, even though you could physically do that, if you were to restrict the driveway to an exit only from, uh, from the commercial building toward the, um, the signal, it would be hard to enforce that, frankly. You know, you could certainly put signs up that would, uh, indicate one-way only, et cetera, but if someone were really intent on using the site for that purpose, even with the signs and other controls, you know, it could still happen. So as a practical matter, it would be hard to have it actually operated as, as a one-way, but as a, just as equally practical is that I don't believe, it's not my opinion, that the site itself would afford some great bypass to, to get to Hingham Street. I, I think the signal works well. It's an easy movement. It's actually more direct to use the signal than it would be to use the site, so. I, my opinion is that there wouldn't be much to be gained out of trying to restrict the use of that driveway.
My, my thought on these driveways, um, the light's the best thing to control where everything's going. That east driveway, I could see getting out of there already, taking a right turn and taking a left could be a disaster. I've been on that road, not necessarily just because of this. You get this building going, you have the other building. I just see coming out of there trying to take a left. It's, especially a rush hour timeframe, you, it's, it's backed up enough at times, even with COVID. It's just kind of a mess.
Yeah, I, I would agree that during certain. Yeah, I, I would agree that during certain hours of the day, during the peak, the traditional peak hours, um, you know, yes, it would be more difficult to make that left, and, uh, that's the reason, the very specific reason that uh, this driveway connection is made to the signal. Uh, anyone who's familiar with this property or the area, uh, depending on what time of day they'd be visiting the site, would be far better off using the signal, and it's fairly direct. I mean, it's, it's a simple right turn from the site to get to the signal. So, um, this, this plan provides the flexibility of using the Hingham Street driveway for a left turn, because there are periods of the day when it, it's not difficult to do that. But I do agree that during the peak hours, um, the highest volume hours, that it, it is difficult, and hence the driveway connection to the signal.
Yeah, because I've come off the highway and sat there, right even before that, trying to get through traffic. Never mind somebody taking a left at the lights, going back and somebody taking a left going in there, in the east end. Never mind somebody coming out to take a left. It's more like right turn only. At least you stop that, but I don't know how you can stop people unless you have a do not enter, and that's an exit only end, but. Um, that's, I just think it's gonna jam.
Yeah, I would suggest in our traffic report that wayfinding signs be placed within the property, uh, indicating, um, driveway to signal with an arrow, so if someone happened to visit the site for the very first time, and it would become apparent to them, more apparent if there were signs, uh, directing them to a traffic signal. Uh, but realistically, over time, depending on who the tenant is, uh, we suspect that people would become familiar with this property, with the site, and would find the path of least resistance, which is the signal. Uh, at least for the left turn. Um, so this affords them that, that, uh, that ability.
Anybody else have anything? Are you good, Randy?
Yeah, I'm good.
John, are you good?
Well, what I've seen, I'm good, but I think we probably should continue this until we get letters from both the, well, the three departments that have problems with this. And also, we need, uh, a, uh, the agreement for the easement through the, uh, registry.
And John, didn't you want to mention about, um, that the fire department was okay with the easement and that the original response from the FD was not okay?
Right, but I think we want a, uh, we need a letter from the deputy. Or the chief, I don't know who would write it, but I think we need a letter from them stating that they are satisfied with it. I can see where they could come in through the property in the back, that may resolve their problem, but you may want to talk to them about, um, sprinkle in the building. I have no idea. I'm not a contractor. I don't know what it would cost. And I'm not trying to give you more cost, but if that may satisfy them a little bit more. Yeah, I don't know how, it must affect your insurance in some way as well. Um, but I think we need a letter from both the fire, the water, the sewer, stating that they are satisfied with what's going on.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely try to arrange a meeting and sit down with them and go over it and resolve it.
I, Don, I emailed you all of those.
Oh, great. Thank you, Christine.
I know the deputy is on vacation this week, and he's probably, he's the one that generally handles it. And if he's got a question, he can go to the chief on it.
As well as Brennan's gonna look at it too, right?
Correct.
Yes, yeah, Pat Brennan should review it, all the calculations.
I sent it to Pat too.
Oh, you did, okay.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Damn, you're efficient tonight, Chrissy.
Oh, well.
All the time, too.
I'll second that.
Also, I have another, uh, thing on your architecturals. We do require some more information than you're actually showing.
Okay.
You know what I mean? You do have the exterior material, the colors and all that stuff, windows, some door locations. But we also require some locations of, uh, the rooftop heating, ventilation and air conditioning equipment and exhaust stacks and stuff like that, intended, whatever else you're putting up there. You know, elevations, finish grades. You know, for floors, roofs and all.
Okay.
What'd you have, what'd you have on the front there? You know what I mean, where you're, you're building height and your overall height, you know? If, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't see a finish grade there for floors and stuff, you know?
See, you just, we'll add the finish grade that we have in the site plan for the floor, is that?
Yeah. But, I mean, just whatever heating and ventilation equipment is going on the roof.
Okay. Yeah, that.
No, I don't, and like I said, I don't know if you're gonna be changing door locations, that, you know what I mean, or anything else like that, but, because I, I know it's kind of tough on how he's making up this property.
Yeah, it's a tough.
If it's two clients or if he's gonna have more, you know what I mean? All that's, it's something to change, more, the more tenants you have, the more exits you're gonna have to have.
Right, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. Um, you know, we'll probably need at least, you know, four weeks, I think, to resolve all these issues and like I said, we're still waiting for a conservation hearing as well, so hopefully it'll coincide close to when we meet with them.
And, uh, Do you know when you meet with them?
No, they haven't given us a date because they're not doing, they, they tried one Zoom meeting, from what I understand, and it didn't go too well as far as public input, um. And so they haven't scheduled a meeting yet. They did allow us to submit everything and allow the consultants to review it, as I mentioned, so it was good we got that. I can also send, you know, send those reviews to, uh, to Christine, and she can forward, forward those to Amy and Janice as well. Probably worthwhile for them to have it and see what those comments were.
Maybe in four weeks, some of this foolishness will be over and we'll be able to meet in person.
I hope so.
I hope so.
It should be a lot easier to understand some of them. Overall, I don't have a problem with the plan. I mean, I, I like the idea of something going there. I think it may be a problem with traffic, but, um, I like the tax revenue for the town, obviously. Um, to me, it looks like a fairly modern-looking building, which I think is good. Um, and to solve these other problems, I think we're all set. I am concerned about your parking. Depending on what you get in there for a tenant, and you might have your architect, once you get your tenants draw up what you've got for restrooms and office areas and things like that, because the parking, um, by law states what area is used for retail.
Right.
So if you take out, I don't know, 500 square feet that you use for offices or restrooms or something, that's gonna have an effect on your parking.
Right. Yeah. So I mean, we may have to shrink the building to accommodate that, you know, we'll have to, you know, see, see what effect that has and make the adjustments that we need, need to, to comply. Oh.
Gives you something to think about for a while.
Yeah, no, definitely, these.
Do you have anything to add, Rob?
Uh, other than the fact that I apologize for the, the zoning board decision not getting to you guys in a timely manner. Uh, that's basically why I'm here, you know, just in case you guys had any questions about the variance. We did, uh, we did approve the variance. Uh, the two variances that they were looking for was, uh, it was rear offset, um, as well as, uh, parking lot offsets with the, um, with the rear entrance. Uh, we approved those, everything seemed fine. Uh, we weren't really concerned about anything else, only because it was a variance situation and not a, uh, and not a special permit situation. Um, at that time, they came to us looking for, again, originally looking for a special permit for the retail. We looked at the retail based on the entire square footage. Um, and I think we already said the 17 parking spaces would have been required if the entire building was gonna be retail. Um, but in the end, you know what happens. Uh, it's all been, with retail, it's only based on the size of this, the size of the, um, sales group. So typically with a retail situation, um, there's gonna be some back storage area, which is gonna come out, which would end up coming out of the parking calculation. But as John said, the, 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 the number may be skewed if you do go to a, um, if you go to an office setup, so depending on who goes in there, depending on what use is, is proposed in the end, that may, that may mod, that may modify the parking, um, the parking requirements for whatever use it is. Uh, but other than that, that's, you know, again, that's why I was here. I just wanted to make sure that you guys had no, had no issues with, um, with the variance or, you know, or looking at the various decisions. Uh, we gave it to them based on, uh, the lot's shape, uh, as well as the topographical. Um, we looked at both and said that that was, uh, a reasonable enough, uh, reasonable enough, uh, reason to, uh, approve variance for the, for the specific lot. Um, and that's about it. I do have a couple of questions, um, because again, we never really talked about it from a special permit act, uh, you know, uh, look. Um, if, if it's okay with the, if it's okay with the chairman and the planning board members, uh, Mr. Bracken, I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
All right, um, number one, I couldn't say, I see the, I see the building, uh, no, the architectural plan that was up there. I can't see the dimension. What's the, what's the overall height dimension that you're proposing?
22 feet.
Yeah.
22 feet high at the highest point.
At the highest point.
At the highest point, but in general, it's 22 feet high.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 18 feet high, goes.
As long as it stays under the, the 36, which is required, you know, the, or the, the max, you know, the maximum for the, for the, for the zone. That was one question I had. Um, the, the other question I had is when it comes to, when it does come to the flood zone, uh, there was a, I don't know if it, 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 did you look into the Loma, or the Lomar that was done, uh, on the Home Depot property?
We did, yeah, that's, that's our starting point. We actually referenced that on the site plans.
Okay.
They established that elevation, and that's how we came up with that. Uh, the blue shaded area was from that Loma.
Okay, because that, and again, that's, it's the same thing that it's, it's pretty much for your area, it's pretty much the same thing that's on the FEMA map. The only issue is that it's an A-zone with no elevation attached. And the, and the next door, the next door neighbor, uh, Lomar kept it as an A-zone. So it's only a digitized, it's a digitized line that doesn't necessarily follow anything. I was on, and I pulled it up while we were on the meeting. I was hoping that they actually put an elevation to it. Um, and I'm hoping that when you go, when, because you said you were going to, you were gonna be petitioning FEMA for, uh, the Loma. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that they'll end up going with what you, with what you say, uh, by topography, because.
Well, we actually, so what you find online does not have an elevation.
Yep.
Um, but we, we made a request to FEMA and they sent us all the hydrology calculations, and there are elevations established in those.
So they actually gave you, they gave you in a, they gave you a height of the flood zone?
Yes, they did. Yeah, it's, it's a pretty thick study, uh, with all the hydrology calculations, which we're actually piggybacking on that study for our own study. And there's also a separate study across the street at the intersection for those two basins on the east side of Commerce. And we're using that analysis. You can see to the west is a drainage channel uh, in that area where the, where the flood zone will be contained in that drainage area as well. But we haven't submitted, submitted it to FEMA yet, but we're getting close.
So you've put all that, you've put all those calc, those, all those calculations, topography that you guys have? Have you, have you had to put that all together?
We're put, we're still putting that together now. Uh, when we follow the Conservation Commission, we actually gave them copies of the studies to show where our assumptions that, you know, uh, are, are accurate enough to show that the site itself is not in a flood zone. We anticipate that Conservation Commission will hire a consultant to review our, our, our Loma application for the, to, to determine that. Uh, but it could take a year to get that back from FEMA.
Yeah, that's, that's why, that's why I kind of brought it up, because it's, it's a lengthy process. It's six mi, in, on paper, it's six months for just a small residential home.
And right now, it could be a year.
Or six weeks, right?
So that's what I said earlier, we can't apply for a building permit until that gets approved by FEMA, because the, the line technically is going through the building, even though that's not realistic.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and the only other, that's, that's honestly, that's really about it, uh, again, during, when it was starting to be talked about initially, when we were dealing with the special permit situation, everybody did kind of look at it. They had questions about that, uh, the, the rear access, um, and what would be utilized for, uh, we looked at it and said that it's probably a better scenario than utilizing the, the, the access on Hingham Street. Um, it's just, it's a more controlled, uh, it's a, it's a more controlled situation for entering and exiting the site. So, you know, if that, if that means anything, if that means anything to the planning board members, we did look at it and we kind of liked the idea of that being the main entrance for, for the building. Um, we didn't talk about, you know, what to do with the access off of Hingham Street, so that's, that would be up to you guys. Um, but again, it was just, we, we liked the idea of being able to use the, utilize that intersection, um, to control it that much more. And, other than that, that's all I got.
Thanks, Rob.
Not a problem, sir. I appreciate you letting me show up and talk.
All right, no problem.
Thanks, Rob.
All right, so what does the board feel?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we continue this till they have an opportunity to get those answers and schedule it at the next easiest meeting that we can have, once everything's put together.
Second that.
All right, so we have a motion to continue until, uh, do you want us to continue it basically until you notify us, or do you want us to put you on for a month, two months?
We, we would like to be put on in four weeks, and I think we could have, you know, everything addressed, hopefully within that four weeks, um.
All right, and if you, if you don't, we can continue it again.
Yeah, yeah, and there's no sense in us coming back if we don't have everything addressed, so.
Okay.
One last thing, Mike. Um, I did, I, I was able to communicate with Pat Brennan. He hasn't been asked to look at this, um, so I don't know if you guys have to set up some sort of fund for Mr. Brennan. Um, I know that we do on the zoning board, so.
I sent it to him.
Okay, so he's got that, so you guys can figure that out in the end, so, um, yeah, there, uh, there you go. Just wanted to let, let you know on that one, too.
All right, yeah, Pat will, Pat will, Pat will look at it in a timely fashion and he, he will definitely report back to us before, before the month, you know?
So Chrissy, have you received the three checks on this?
Yep.
Okay, we're all set then as far as Pat's concerned.
All right, so we have a motion to continue until uh, next meeting in August, whatever that is.
Fourth Tuesday, is it like the 24th or 20?
Uh, Tuesday, that'd be the 25th. All right, so I'll.
Second that motion, just so you have that.
I got you, Randy.
All right, so we'll, we'll go through the procedure.
John, is anybody, uh, Mike, is there anybody else in this meeting that has something to say on that or is not, not applicable here?
Does anybody else have anything to say before we continue the meeting?
All righty then.
All right, John, what, the official vote?
John says yes to continue.
Randy?
Randy, yes to continue.
All right, um, Mike, Michael Corbett, I say yes to continue it until next month, till the end of August. We should have updates from everybody on, hopefully. I don't know how busy everybody else's schedule is. I don't know how you meet with anybody, but hopefully you guys can have Zoom meetings or something to. All right, so we will see you on the 25th.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate all, all the input. Thanks.
All right. All right, next on the agenda, we have a minute from June 23rd's meeting.
And on that note, I'm out of here. Thank you, planning board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, hey, Rob, those lights are green tonight.
Oh, the, I'll talk to you later, Mr. Lucas.
Okay.
See y'all. Thank you all.
All right, thanks, Rob.
Later.
All right, what is the approval of the board for the minutes?
I moved it. We approve the minutes from the 23rd of, uh, June.
Randy will second that.
Thank you, Randy, all right, we have a first and a second, the minutes. All right, John?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Uh, I'm Michael, I approve the minutes. All right, one of the favorite parts of the night, motion to pay the secretary?
Motion to pay the secretary, Randy.
John will second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, Randy?
Randy, yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm Michael, that's a yes. You'll get paid, Chrissy?
Maybe.
All right, upcoming activity? I really have nothing, John?
Um, two weeks ago, I think it was, I met with Doug and Jen and A.W. Perry regarding the development on um, Hingham Street. They have quite a bit of plans drawn up. Uh, obviously on a tentative basis, they're looking at putting in a 17,000 square foot supermarket. They're looking at putting in a um, four-story hotel. And um, I'm guessing it's somewhere around, I don't have it in front of me, around eight um, fast food operations, none of which being the McDonald's, the Burger King and that type of thing, all on upscale fast food restaurant. I think they were thinking of two to three uh regular restaurants in there, dry cleaners. They've got quite an extensive plan put together for it. Um, all, three to four-story buildings, first floor all being commercial, second, third, and or fourth being residence. Um, most likely, most of them will be single, uh, one-bedroom apartments. They're looking at an upper-class tenant, probably a professional that's be traveling Route 3 uh in and out of the city. They're looking to get this on next May's town meeting. Um, I suggested to them that they get as much as they can as plans to us sometime in November, so we'll have an opportunity to look it over and ask questions, and then come January, February, present it to the public with two, three or four meetings with the community, the way we did with the um downtown redevelopment, uh, the 40R project. They seem to be agreeable to that without much of a problem. They have several professional companies working with them as far as doing the bylaws over. They have a tentative set up bylaws, but I didn't bother bringing them or distributing them because it's gonna change to a certain degree. I was talking to Jen today, they have just hired the Middlesex. Chrissy, do you remember the name of the outfit?
I do not.
It's the same outfit that we worked with on the 40R program. Um, they're all, this same company is working with Hingham and uh Norwell for some of their plans, which will probably fit right in with what we're doing here and make everything work well. I don't know quite where they start with that, but it's definitely in the process. Um, and it sounded like a, a nice project for us. Uh, they want to put it together or the town wants it so that it doesn't hurt downtown area, but also benefits that end of the town.
Would that be across from Lucas?
Commerce Road, yes.
Okay.
I think it's 144 acres in there.
In the two towns?
No, just in Rockland. So it's pretty much the Commerce Road side of Hingham Street. Commerce Road would be part of it and it would go back up behind um, the car dealerships and a little bit going toward um, the left of Commerce Road. The building that is in there, the sprinkler company, I think it's a sprinkler company, as of this point in time is still staying there, they're not gonna move out, so they're gonna build around them.
The range is being stubborn.
Yeah, by that time, they should be ready to go.
He's got a big price.
Well, I think A.W. Perry's a little sorry they sold him that building a couple of years ago.
I bet.
That's about it, that's all I've heard. Wendy's is going along very nicely, I suspect we'll see that open probably in, at the most, three months, if not two months.
Yeah, I noticed they had the foundation and then they were doing some uh drainage, everything inside, you know?
Right, I, I imagine most of that building's prefab.
I, it could be, you know, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if they built it right there, it's not that big.
No, it's one of the smallest they've ever built, so.
Yeah, I saw that, I'm like, I haven't seen anybody work there by the time I get off the highway, but it's good to see that thing moving forward after.
Well, they've only worked maybe a week and a half and they've put the footing in, the foundation in and the floor in.
Yeah.
But they're not messing around.
No, because I know they were running it open in July, that's not happening.
Maybe next July.
They'll be done before Labor Day, I think, I think they're.
That's all I've got, Mike.
All right, you have anything, Randy?
No, sir.
Man, I haven't heard back from anything, I don't know what's happening with Pond Street. I don't know if they've gone through zoning or if they've been scheduled for that.
They went to zoning the other night, but nothing was done.
Okay.
Anything on Concon?
I mean, that's what I mean, Concon not.
Oh, 365 Concon Street is gonna go before zoning on August 4th.
Okay. And that's going in as a 40B?
I guess so.
Then that won't, that won't come to us at all.
No.
He's gonna keep it as a 40B?
Um, from what I understand, I haven't heard anything different. But if you want to join that meeting on August 4th.
No, maybe I will, maybe I'll jump in as the public. Do you have anything, Chrissy?
I don't.
Boy, that's a first.
I thought I sent that to Pat, but apparently I didn't, so. But I sent it to him, he's got it now.
Uh, I said, with Pat's calculations, it wasn't gonna make a difference with all the other question marks on it.
No, I know, I know. And let me ask you a question. So when all these Form K's come back, do you want them to be sent to the applicant? Or is that something that you just want to discuss like you did tonight and then I sent them? I've never sent them to anybody until after.
Never sent them to anybody, they always come back before us. I would say keep it as is.
And then send them to him as it comes up during a meeting?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if, if there is a problem, because 99% of the time things are addressed beforehand, a lot of times they're in touch with these people.
Right.
Right, well, I'm supr, really surprised they didn't talk to these people ahead of time.
Yeah.
Well, I was wondering, because we've never had to do that and normally that come, they, they already have that paperwork and that answered before our meeting comes up.
All right, so I'll just leave it as we've always done, we get it, I give them to you and that's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we generally don't have this type of problems, I, when I read through them, I'm sure Mike and Randy read through them. Uh, it was totally different than what we normally get. All three of them have problems with us?
All those are usually corrected before they come before us.
Correct.
Right.
I don't, I don't know why they haven't been in touch with them.
Okay.
Covid or not, people still answer email.
That's true, all right, I just wanted to check based on the conversations tonight, like, because I've never sent any responses other than to just the board. Um, so.
Yeah, you just worry about us, they, they should worry about themselves, yes.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
We'll worry about you too, Randy.
Oh, she does, oh, believe me, I can remind us left and right.
I still need you to sign that signature sheet, though, Randy.
Oh, crap, all right, so tomorrow, what time you in there?
Tomorrow, I'm leaving at 12:00.
I will be in there, I'll text you when I'm coming.
Okay, because I'm taking Thursday. I'm taking Thursday off.
Oh, so why even going in?
Well, that's tomorrow's Wednesday.
Wednesday, Randy.
See what I mean? That's why I need her.
You text me and I'll come outside and see you.
All right, tomorrow, I'm putting it right on my notes on my desk, big sticky note, thank you.
Okay.
All right. If we have nothing else, do I have a motion to close?
I move that we close.
You know, second that motion, says Randy.
Right. We have a first and a second, John?
Yes.
Randy?
Randy, yes.
Michael, yes.
That's a wrap.
That is a wrap.